And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 7, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. The time is now 7:00 p.m., so I'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If Vice Chairman Fisher would please lead us in that. We'll follow that by a brief moment of reflection. Please rise.
Ladies and legends, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask that you please pause for a moment of reflection. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to establish voting members. We are one regular member down, which in that case, we would have our alternate fill in for that particular member. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
You guys are ahead of me. Wow. All right. All right, Pam, you are a voting member. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone for any additions or deletions to the agenda. If there are no additions or deletions, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. At this time, please take a moment to review the January 10, 2023, meeting minutes. And once you've done so, we can get a motion for approval of the minutes or any changes that may be required.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as they've been presented.
A motion to accept the minutes as presented. Do we have a second? All in favor? All right. Brings up agenda item for rezoning case CZ 2022-001, Roshah. At this time, before we even get into the presentation, I'd like to ask, is the applicant present this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is not present. They were notified that this was scheduled, however, didn't communicate one way or the other. I will note that last month, when we had the one on Crane Road, applicant wasn't present for that one either. Or I'm sorry, two months ago.
I believe they were, were they not?
I thought they were.
They were. They were for the Board of Commissioners. Oh, it's for the public hearing they were present? Oh, okay. They were here for this, but they weren't here for a public hearing. I apologize then. They just blew off the Board of Commissioners instead of you.
I feel privileged. At this time, typically, it's been customary that we don't hear any type of a case where the applicant doesn't show, but we just defer. And I don't know if there's a motion to defer this to a later date when the applicant could be present or just not render an opinion on this one.
I move we defer it to a later date.
I second that.
You do have some folks here that may be in opposite. I'm not sure. I don't know. You could have Bjorn go through the staff report, take their statements, and then table it until the next meeting to see if the applicant wants to come. That's certainly in your, I'm just throwing that out.
All right, Charlie is withdrawing the motion. So at this point, yeah, please just proceed with an overview. And since these folks have taken their time to come out here this evening, I'd like to at least take note of their concerns for public record.
So this rezoning case you are hearing this evening is CZ-2022-001. We call it ROKA, last name of the property owners. This is a request to rezone the portion of a parcel on 601 South to essentially bring in existing landscaping, septic, and outdoor recreation construction business into compliance with zoning. The request is to rezone from RA 40 to light industrial with conditions. There are a list of conditions below. It's essentially what's shown on the site plan, to be compliant with our development regulations, to implement the septic system that has been permitted for this site, and to bring all buildings that are being used for business uses into compliance with the building code. This is what the site plan looks like. It's part of a larger parcel. North is at the top of your screen. 601 is right here. They would make use of an existing driveway, use the existing buildings. And an area is shown for future development. There is buffering along the edge of the site outside of any storage or vehicular equipment storage as well. And this is what would be filed as a part of the rezoning if approved. Existing conditions, you can see, looking at the site itself, the two buildings that are shown there. And we're taking the picture from 601. You can see south on 601, it's at a turnaround bulb, so they would keep the existing right-in, right-out access. And to the north, it's the residential, to the north of the existing business. So shown in tan, the portion of the site that would be split out, the black line is the actual parcel. So development status, there are some residential properties nearby. There's a lot of agricultural land, considered undeveloped or partially developed. In terms of environmental features, there's a pond and a stream on the northern edge of the site. It's not affected by, this site is not going to affect that. The area is largely cleared. In terms of the zoning, RA 40, it's predominant zoning for the area. Transportation, this is effectively unchanging towards transportation because the uses are already in existence. You see the traffic counts for 601 South, approximately 20,000 vehicles per day. And you see the green line for the four-lane with a paved shoulder designation stopping at Macedonia Church. And that's because that's the edge of the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization's boundary. So that's where the end of the Conference of Transportation Plan or CTP recommendations. And there are no funded road improvements in the area, however. The green line across the northern edge is actually part of Monroe Loop that would be done in the future if ever, but it's not a funded project. That's just a line on the map to show that in that general area, Monroe would like to have a loop road built on the southern side of the city. In terms of the land use plan, there's an overlay of the employment corridor. The underlying land use recommendation is for rural residential. So the employment corridor is essentially a buffer along 601. Doesn't mean that every single piece of land along that corridor is appropriate for industrial uses, but where the site makes sense, that the land can meet development standards, that has appropriate access to the highway and appropriate utilities, that would be supported use. Terms of impact on schools and the utilities, schools were not contacted because this is not a residential development. Terms of utilities, does not have access to water or sewer service, so it'll be served by well and septic. Public feedback, a community meeting was held in early January. There were two attendees. Since then, one email comment has been received with concerns over industrial uses already occurring on the site. And because it wasn't close to the city of Monroe, municipal feedback was not solicited. Terms of our recommendations and observations, negative of it is that it is industrial use near a residential area. However, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It does meet our development standards. Apart from this, it does bring a zoning violation into compliance with zoning, which is something we always strive towards. Not to say that we put the cart before the horse in terms of approving land use recommendations for zoning violations, but in this instance, it is a use along a corridor where such uses are recommended. So our recommendation is for approval. If the applicant were here, we'd ask them to speak. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or if you want to call anyone who signed up to speak.
Bjorn?
Yes, sir.
Where you showed the portion that was to be subdivided, I believe it's in the brown or tan.
Yes, sir.
Where is the access and egress from that?
It's essentially on the edge of that line. So you've got the house right here. In fact, let's see if we have one that's an aerial. So you see the driveway right there? That's essentially the new property line. So it would serve the house near the lake or the pond, and then to the south, the commercial, the buildings.
Where does it go?
Where's it go?
Does it hook up with, I can't read, Pageland Highway?
Yeah, it's a, it has a driveway onto 601 or Pageland Highway.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Ms. Duda?
So I'm curious how long it's been in violation of the building code?
Well over a year, possibly two years.
Are they penalized for that?
Well, we've been going through the violation process with it. I believe it's in court now, isn't it?
So the way violations typically work, I'll be honest with you, neither one of us really handle those. But usually, we get a complaint, send somebody out to take a look. And of course, they were found to be in violation. They get a letter in the mail saying, hey, you're in violation of the ordinance. It can progress to eventually going to court. We generally don't send out fines or anything like that. It's much easier to go through the court system and get compliance that way. That's what we do. Because we're not, we don't, we're not after people breaking the rules and getting money and allowing them to continue breaking rules. If you have zoning for a reason, you want them to comply with the zoning. So we'll generally go to court for that. This has not gone to court yet because they are trying to go through the rezoning process and trying to bring it into compliance. If the rezoning were to fail and they did not bring it into compliance, then we would end up in court, probably.
Okay. Because to me, it just seems like we're rewarding them for being out of compliance by doing that.
Sure. This, I mean, this is a way to bring it into compliance. So if the rezoning were to pass, then it would be brought into compliance. But again, if the rezoning failed, then, you know, it's not in compliance and you continue the enforcement action.
But you're also setting a precedent, especially if this is the only light industrial along the RA 40. I think that's a big stretch going from RA 40 to light industrial. I just think it is kind of a backwards way of getting it in compliance because you're setting a standard. Just my own opinion.
True.
Thank you.
We'll note that they do have the right to submit a rezoning application. Even if they are going through a zoning violation action, they still have that option. So it's not like we could have rejected it. So we're essentially processing both at the same time, both the violation and the rezoning.
What constitutes them being out of compliance? A signage or?
It's the fact that this is an RA 40-zoned parcel, and they have a, essentially have a construction business located there, which is a business type of use. And because they have the, because they have the equipment and the material storage, it goes from business to an industrial type of use.
So, you know, we have small businesses based out of homes and farms all over the county. Why is this one picked on versus any other?
Well, a farm is a farm, so they can have the agricultural exemption. And a home, we have plenty of home-based occupations that we process over the course of a year, whether it's for a person cutting hair or whether it's a person making cabinets. But what wouldn't be allowed in this instance is bringing employees to the site and then dispatching them somewhere else. If they were coming onsite and they were fabricating cabinets or they were fabricating, they could even be working on cars, but they couldn't, they couldn't have customers coming back and forth. They couldn't be delivering them offsite. That's where the threshold is, and it changes away from, it changes from a home-based occupation to a business. And those uses at the houses, they are, they're secondary to it being a residence. In this instance, there's no way you could say that this is secondary to it being a residential property.
Yeah. You essentially have some regulations for rural home occupations that allow some outside storage and some buildings associated with the business. But this, the amount that they have exceeds what would be allowed for a rural home occupation. And the fact that they dispatch, you know, have employees coming there and going out.
Is there a threshold, is there a guideline? Okay, you can have five employees dispatched from your house?
You can have, I think the threshold's three.
Three employees?
So yes, we do, we deal with home-based occupation requests frequently. And sometimes it works, and sometimes what they're proposing doesn't work.
And you also have some instances for some types of businesses that are allowed. And this board has considered a couple of RA 200 rezonings, which is kind of a trade-off. It's a little bit more, it allows a little bit more of an intensive. This type of business is not allowed in RA 200. But there are some, a little bit more intensive type of rural home occupation, but it's a trade-off. You have to be in a lower-density zoning district to do it. So you're trading off density for the ability to operate a more intensive home occupation.
So is that kind of like the SecureTurf, their RA 200?
Yes.
So these people couldn't apply for like a RA 200?
No.
Because they don't have enough property?
You guys mentioned bringing existing buildings up to the proper, excuse me, I guess, building code or whatever. What, if anything, are they going to need to do? What, the two buildings that they've got?
They have two. Probably the two biggest things would be that septic field for the business uses as opposed to the residential one, which is for the house to the north. And the second part would be sprinklering for employees.
If it were to be okay to be rezoned, how would you, how would you make sure that that got done?
They have to go get the building permits and have those, have that inspected and brought up.
Okay. So the zoning wouldn't change until they prove that they have?
That's part, that's one of the conditions.
Okay.
So if they don't take action on that, they're in violation, and we could take it away. The Board of Commissioners could take it away.
Bjorn, how much noise does this business create?
How much noise? Yeah, I would, I would say so too. This would be an applicant question.
Any additional questions for Bjorn at this time?
Yeah, I got one. Bjorn, you said there's a house there right now?
On the overall red parcel, yes. There is a house there. It will not be part of the parcel that's the business.
So the parcel that's in question, they need a septic field?
Yes.
And a well?
Yes.
What does the house have?
Their own, their own well and septic.
And is this a landscape company or a construction company?
Landscaping. But they also, so they install septic fields. They also install like playground-type of equipment as well.
So if it's a landscape company, they fix their equipment on-site there then?
They have?
They change oil in the machines, they sharpen blades, whatever.
I'm sure they do those things there, yes.
Thank you, Bjorn. At this time, I would typically call the applicant. But it should be noted, the applicant is not present. So we'll move on to public comments. One and only name, and let me know if I can get this incorrect. Phyllis Pinkus?
Yes.
Just please state your name and your place of residence, whether it be a township or unincorporated Union County, just for the record, and then whether you are for or opposed to this.
Right. Okay. My name is Phyllis Clausen-Pinkus. I live in Weddington. I grew up at 2401 Pageland Highway adjacent to this and still have that house. We've been renting it since my mother died three years ago. And I am here, anything else? I am here to oppose the rezoning of this parcel for several reasons. One, the owner of this parcel is really asking for forgiveness, not permission. They've been using this as an industrial area since they applied to rezone before. And even now, they are accumulating unsightly debris in that beige area just feet from Pageland Highway at the Macedonia Church turnaround. Two, the only zoning that is not RA 40 is much further south on Pageland Highway. And those parcels, I've ridden down there and looked at them, you can look at them on Google Street View, are very tidy businesses, generally associated with agricultural uses of, you know, Highway 601. Three, the industry along this corridor, especially near Monroe, is not compatible with the neighboring residential areas. I have a question about groundwater because in the 70 years the house has been there, suddenly in the last 10 years, the groundwater has gone muddy. And it's never been that way before. We've had to put a whole house filter on the house and replace the new hot water heater because it had sediment buildup. Four, you should not allow this rezoning so close to Monroe because it will encourage more industry down Highway 601, and it's going to turn into another Highway 74, and you'll need a bypass for it one day. Five, city and county should be promoting residential growth on Highway, on Pageland Highway, not industrial because Pageland Highway feeds into the largest business, the largest employment center in the county, the regional hospital and the medical complexes up at Hilltop. The Affordable Cottage Green subdivision, just a mile outside of the hospital, near Lakely, had to be annexed into Monroe to get water and sewer, and it sold out before they even built the houses. They took the sign down. They're still building houses. It's all sold out. Your six, your policy of not providing new county water and sewer except where you already have pipes in the ground is causing a decline in Monroe. The people who live in the densely populated west and north side of Union County do not shop in Monroe. They don't even know where Monroe is. They go up to Mecklenburg and Pineville and Matthews. And even the bypass has made it possible for my friends in Wingate and Marshall, I went to Forest Hills, Wingate, Marshall, to zip past Monroe and shop in Mecklenburg. Lastly, you need to take into account that the population of Union County has increased 4.5 times in 50 years. That is painful, but it's not going to change. Charlotte housing is going upward. If you've been there, you know what it looks like. And that is not attractive to families. They all flee to Union County and the other surrounding counties. We are no longer a rural county with small towns. You need to adjust your comprehensive plan and provide water and sewer for housing to areas where the residents will shop in Monroe and encourage industry to move off the main roads, like the lovely airport area. There's plenty of areas where industry is just off the main road so that the main road corridor will stay attractive with, like it is now. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to encourage any board discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very concerned. We've had a couple of comments made tonight, and the applicant needed to be here to answer those. One was noise, the questions about the equipment, the groundwater, et cetera. And I don't think we, my opinion is that we cannot make a recommendation to send this forward at this time to the Board of Commissioners without knowing what's in these people's mind as applicants. I don't have the rest of the board feels in all respect to what anybody says, either in agreement or disagreement.
Feel free to speak up.
Can I ask a lady a question?
By all means.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Have you, have you visited the site?
Oh, yes. Before they cut up the gate on the driveway, I had to go there and talk to the people in the big building and ask them to stop shooting across my field and then crossing over and picking up whatever they shot. And, you know, there were a couple there that I were able to talk to, and they ceased.
You said, you said there was a lot of debris around the place?
There's a lot. If you drive, just make the turn in Macedonia Church Road, you are facing a debris pile between those buildings and.
When you say debris, is it like branches and stuff like?
No, it's concrete slabs, like they cut out a road. It's big, you can see in one of the pictures, or just go to Google Street View. It's big, I don't know what you do with it. It's big crumbles of concrete, road, pavement, slabs, and there's stuff, but quite unsightly. I think in the plan, they are going to put up shrubbery maybe along 601. But you're looking uphill, the debris piles, so it's going to have to be 40, 50 feet tall to shield that from the public. It's not an attractive road front. And I know there's other stuff on 601, but you can't see it. It's in the backyard or like the businesses down 601. They have a parking spot up front, they have a building, and then there's stuff going on behind. But that's not, you know, it looks very tidy from 601, but this does not.
Okay.
Ma'am, is your property north of this site?
Yes.
Okay. Little square?
No, the little square is the summer ones, I think. I'm the next parcel.
On beyond?
Yep. A field, and then the house driveway is, I have three parcels. But one abuts this property, and the other two abut that parcel.
Okay. Excuse me.
So I'm not the little square. I'm the, this is, I mean, my ancestors started buying up this property in 1900. So, I mean, I may not sound like a southerner, but I lived in Chapel Hill. So anyway, I mean, I'm, this is my home area.
Right.
And I had to marry Yankee because I was a lady.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Sorry. I know, it's true. I think all this family property lady used.
My crowd started here in 1883, so, okay. They started here in 1883.
Who did?
My, my bunch.
Richardson's?
Yeah. Well, that, my set of them, yeah. Six different sets in Union County.
Mike Kupfer's and Richardson's go back to 1690.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, they do.
Union County.
Long time.
Yeah. Francis Vey, John Lee, John. I'm in Union County, and I just don't want to see 601 turn into another 74.
For what it's worth, I tend to agree with Vice Chairman Fisher.
I was just going to say the same thing. I think the applicant needs to be here. His questions that need to be answered.
I do, too.
And I did try to contact, I talked with Jonathan Meek, and I got a couple of answers, but not, not to my own list of far middle questions because I have a master's degree in far middle management, work for Du Power. So I had a lot of far middle questions.
If you agree.
I mean, if they're bringing in concrete and stuff, they got some big equipment. And I'm sure they're working on that equipment at this yard. I mean, the buildings in the back look like garages where they're probably working on equipment and stuff, so.
There's a lot of unanswered questions.
I mean, I just don't like the fact that, you know, they're going to put a septic and a well.
I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Griffin.
Okay. All right. I suggest we table it for the next meeting, give everyone one chance to get here.
I agree.
Charlie, could we also ask the applicant to be here, I mean, the speaker tonight, when the applicant's here?
That's up to them. That's up to them.
Do we have a motion based on the discussion?
I move to table until the next meeting.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of tabling? Thank you. And for what it's worth, the discussion, Mr. Pinkus, if you would, if you could be present, I understand that this is an inconvenience for you to come down here. We do appreciate you actually showing up, so.
I shop in Monroe. I come here often.
It's April 4th.
April 4th. I will, I'll be here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to our next agenda item, Planning Staff Report.
Just have a couple of things. Just have a couple of things. First of all, let's know the Seminelli rezoning, which came before you, I think last month, that went to the Board of County Commissioners, public hearing, and they eventually approved that rezoning. That was the four lots off of?
Crane Road?
It was four lots off Crane Road, the board approved it. So I think that's the most recent thing that's, that's, that's come to you. The, the second item I want to discuss briefly is, I'm not sure how many of you are aware, the Board of Commissioners directed staff last night to work on a text amendment to combine the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board as one board. That's, honestly, that's all the information I have right now. I don't know the, we, it just happened last night, so we will start working with our legal staff on what that looks like.
Questions or comments for Lee at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions about what you've been asked to work on. I realize that the state law permits this to be done.
Yes.
In the municipality of the county. I would like to ask that you provide the members of the board here, Lee, if any way possible, data by month for the last five years of Board of Adjustment cases that have been heard. That'd be 60 months worth.
Okay.
Okay, can we do that by month?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
All right. Next, in looking at this, would like to find out what would be the conflict of Planning Board members and BOA having adjudicated some stuff to where a member, whoever it may be, of that new board which is about to come about, or combination of both, would they put themselves in jeopardy of conflict of interest, making decisions one way and possibly another way? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not sure that, that I can fully answer that question. I think what I could do is given an overview of what the Planning Board's responsibilities are and what the Board of Adjustment's responsibilities are, and talk a little bit about what they, what they hear and what they decide upon.
Because I'm concerned about adjudication and then getting cross, whoever it is gets in the crosshairs. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you. I'd also like a list for the board of the pros of why this should be done and the cons of why it shouldn't be done. Does that make sense?
It does.
For us to look at. And if, I think if we did that, that would help the approval process or disapproval process to the board for us to make on this text amendment, if that's not too much work.
No, I can, I can put together, of course, that's, that's kind of subjective. Some people may consider a pro, a con, and a con, a pro, but I can certainly put, put together that list. And it would be based on the responsibilities of what each board did.
If you could do that, and then if we don't like them, we'll check, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you, Lee.
And, and just, just to kind of, not build on that, but this, this, this process, this, this combining the two boards will require a text amendment to the, to the ordinance. At least we are 90% sure at this point that that's what will happen. And that being the case, that text amendment will come to you for review and some sort of recommendation. So that will be coming in the next probably month, I would assume, month or two.
Is it out of conflict with each other?
Well, I mean, you, you would be making a recommendation on combining the two boards, but, I mean, that's the way, anytime a text amendment is proposed, it is state law that the Planning Board weigh in on it. So you have to.
No, I appreciate that. More important, the subject matter is kind of common sense.
Sure. Yeah. I, I.
I'm the one who talks about the ultimate.
Any additional questions for Lee at this time?
That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. We will move on to brief comments. At this time, Mrs. Duda?
I'm not going to lie, I was a little surprised on that one. I wasn't privy to that information. I didn't know that that was decided, so I'm kind of still spinning over here. As far as the last presentation, I'm, I think I made my voice clear in that I don't think we need to reward people who are disobeying our rules. I hope people not take offense to that, but just, I don't want to set a bad precedent for our county, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKeer? Mr. McNally? Mr. Hears?
Has anyone heard from Mr. Helms, Richard Helms? I heard his coal ladder exploded and it wasn't doing very well. Just curious if anyone's heard anything.
I think that was announced at the board meeting last night, that Mr. Wade was, he was not doing well and people were afraid.
I haven't heard anything.
Mr. Griffin? Vice Chairman Fisher?
No comments.
This time, if you bear with me, I'd like to make some comments I have prepared. As you may or may not know, last night's Board of County Commissioners meeting, the board voted by a margin of three to one to direct staff to investigate combining the Planning Board with the Board of Adjustment. Make no mistake, these are two boards with unique yet relevant purposes. They operate differently as well. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi judicial board whose decisions cannot be overridden by the Board of County Commissioners, but rather appealed in Superior Court. Planning Board, however, is merely an advisory board which offers opinions and recommendations. No decision is legally binding. This move to combine boards has been billed as the, billed by the Board of County Commissioners as a move towards smaller government, but in reality, it's a very intentional move that reflects their desire to move towards an autocracy. By combining these boards, the Board of County Commissioners will dissolve the existing boards and create new boards comprised of handpicked individuals that will operate as instructed by three commissioners and not by the will of the people. During my time on this board, I consider myself quite fortunate to sit alongside some of the most thoughtful, responsible, and civic-minded folks I have ever worked with. We come from diverse backgrounds with varying opinions, as well as unique perspectives shaped by our individual experiences. We don't always agree. In fact, I cannot name a fellow board member who has an identical voting record to myself. Despite this, there's a profound mutual respect among board members and a strong desire to work towards the greater good. This is the way government should operate. In the coming weeks, there will be opportunities for public comment regarding this proposed change. I would encourage all citizens who feel they should have a say, to have your voices heard, send emails to your commissioners, speak at any public hearings, make your friends and neighbors aware of yet another power grab. We simply cannot allow decisions in Union County to come down to the whims of three individuals. There may be retribution in response to speaking up against this proposed change. Given the record of our current Board of County Commissioners, I would almost expect it. With that in mind, any retribution or further attempts to take power away from the people would only serve to reinforce these concerns and demonstrate why it's important to have, to voice your opinion while you still can. Then I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Do we have one? All in favor?
Seven.
Time is now 7:39. Meeting adjourned.